Okay, let's kick it off. This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press and was also sent to the Two River Times and the Star Ledger. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall as it remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as having requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Roll call please Sandy.
Mr. Nick Chesney.
Here.
Mrs. Quigley.
Yeah.
Mr. Ridgeway. Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Ledman.
Here.
Dr. Lauffer.
Here.
Mr. Kinsella.
Here.
Mr. Shavetti.
Here.
Mr. Leader.
Here.
I'll just lift the flag please. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
For the United States of America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberty.
Justice.
For all.
Okay. Uh. Old business is Burke. Todd, do you want me to run through this?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead Peter, thank you.
Okay, um. I believe the Burkes have requested to carry it to the January meeting. I guess it's Jan 6th. Is that the right date, Sandy?
Yep, that's correct.
Uh, Mr.
Mike, do we have a notice issue with this at all or?
Well, I just wanted to indicate that we received a letter from John Sardo Esquire who's uh, the Atkins attorney, the letter was dated November 18. Uh, and he indicated the applicant had difficulty with tonight's meeting date because there was a family medical issue. And also the applicant was in the um, was in the process of revising the plans to reduce some of the requested vantage relief. But the reason I bring it up, Mr. Natchezin, is I note that the letter indicates that they were asking that the matter be carried without the necessity of further notice to the board's next available meeting. And he adds, which we understand may be the meeting after the board's January reorg meeting. So it sounds like he was requesting February if I understood that correctly.
Maybe they're, maybe they're under the impression that we won't be able to hear a case at the reorganization meeting.
Well, and that's the next issue that the board has to decide because, you know, it's, it's up to each board, but many boards have adopted the practice of not hearing applications. Because professionals may not know whether or not they should prepare for that night. Because they're only going to be, the decision will be made that night as to whether they remain professionals of the board.
Right, um, given our intended path Todd, do we want to maybe put this, carry this to February?
Well Sandy, let's um, what, what do we have that's currently complete and on the agenda as of today?
Um, we have another application for an addition and renovation for thirty-three seater is the one that's coming up for also January.
That's already scheduled for January?
And that's the date that I gave them. Would be the next meeting date. I haven't given them officially information because I didn't know what we were going to do for January.
And I, so. Also, Mr. Leader, that Mr. Sardo's letter does give us an extension of time through the end of February. In case you want to assign him the February date, it's okay. Well, and of course, the other way that things are handled with the professionals is that the existing professionals are asked to move through the materials. Um, and then a transition is made at a time that it's appropriate if in fact that transition occurs. So Sandy, when you say that you told them about the, the meeting in January, is it your impression that they would have noticed already?
They have not noticed. They definitely haven't noticed because I sent them a note today to let them know that I wasn't sure whether we would be in person or Zoom. And not to notice until I got back to them.
Okay. Um. What is the January schedule of the planning and the zoning board? Um, do you know now when those meetings are, what those dates are?
For the planning board for January?
Yeah, it's really difficult to lean into this. So it, to the extent that anyone hasn't noticed, there's, there's an agenda item that we're going to go to. I'm going to propose a going to closed session to talk about related to professionals for two thousand twenty-two. The reason I ask you Sandy is that I know that the borough is preparing RFPs and the planning board has requested RFPs be done for their officials. Um, and so I'm wondering if the planning boards before or after our meeting.
The planning board is January eighteenth and zoning board is the sixth.
Okay, so um, I would think that it, it makes perfect sense if we only have two matters. Uh, one of which would be coming back to us and one of which would be new. We're not creating a backlog, I don't think, to put them both in February. Um, and I think it keeps things cleaner, uh, that we leave the January meeting open. Um, and I think that would be my thought. I'm open to other ideas.
I think that makes sense because we don't know what's going to happen in January still. So let's uh, I don't want to jam it up and have people come for no reason. So.
Anybody feel differently?
No.
Okay. And I'll move to carry the Burke application to the February meeting. Sandy could confirm that date um.
February meeting will get um confirmed at the reorganization meeting. So we only have through January.
Well, my, my suggestion would be if we're going to carry it without the necessity of renotice that we announce, we announce the date that we assume will be the February date, the first Thursday in February. And if it changes, then the applicant's going to have to notice. But otherwise, if in the reorg, we adopt the scheduled meetings that has that February date in it, everything should be fine.
Okay, so that would be February the third.
Okay.
Uh, so I'll uh, move, move to carry the Burke application to the February third meeting without necessity of reno's.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Nick Chesney.
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Ledman.
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsella.
Yes.
Mr. Leader.
Yes.
Okay. Um, a couple of administrative items. I think we're going to flip this. We'll do the discussion after the minutes. Um, I was not here. We have a resolution for Stevens. I was not present for that, so I don't think I can make the motion on it, the Stevens resolution.
That's correct. Only those who voted in favor of the action taken can make the motion and can vote on the resolution.
Alright, so if somebody would be so kind.
Stevens, Lewis Point.
Yes.
Yes, one zero eight Louis, Louis Lane.
Louis Lane.
Yeah. Marquesi.
Yes, the October meeting.
Thank you.
The uh. We need a, we need a motion.
The covers over the front entrance, the cover over the garage, the cover on the side entrance.
Past this meeting of all times.
I make a motion to approve the Stevens resolution as submitted.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Ledman.
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer.
Yes.
Mr. Shavetti.
Yes.
And Mr. Leader.
Yes.
Uh, likewise, the minutes from the October seventh and October twenty-first meetings.
You may want to, you may want to do them separately, Mr. Natchezin, because I don't know who was.
Yeah, that's a good point. So the October seventh meeting I was not present at, so somebody will have to make the motion for that one.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Ledman.
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Shavetti.
Yes.
And Mr. Leader.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, October twenty-first, I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty-first meeting as submitted.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Nick Chesney.
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Ledman.
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer.
Yes.
And Mr. Leader.
Yes.
Okay, brings us to the discussion for board professionals. Todd, are we going to move to? Did we lose you? Mr. Leader, are you still there?
I'm sorry, I'm still here. Uh, hold on, I'm dealing with the fact that one phone can't do everything. Uh, did I lose you?
We can hear you. We can hear you. There's no, no video.
I'll get back to it, hold on. Yeah, trying to respond to a text was not easy. Uh, hold on.
Multidrastic.
Yeah, it stinks. Okay, sorry guys. Okay, uh, so here, here's what I'd like to do. Before we do that, um, I'd like to talk about um, going back to live meetings starting in January. Um, the, the issue has come up as to what we're, what we're doing in January. Um, I know that we have discussed this. I think it was the August meeting that we discussed this. We uh, the history of this is that we were virtual for about, you know, a year, I guess, maybe eighteen months. We went back to live for a single meeting. The Delta variant hit. Uh, and we decided out of caution to go back to virtual. Um, the planning board is live and the council is live and have been so for a number of months. Of course, as this conversation comes up, uh, there's a new variant floating around uh, that everybody's trying to figure out. Um. What, uh, what do the board members think about going back to live, uh, back to, uh, for January?
Yeah, I'm happy to go back to live, uh, all the other uh, boards and council is all live and I think it would be advantageous for our, both the professionals and, and the applicants themselves.
Uh, I agree with Pete and uh, oddly, or interestingly, I've only been to one full live meeting because the first meeting I went to was cut short. And then we had the March or the February meeting and since then we have been virtual. I missed the one meeting, so I would love to uh, see all your smiling faces in person.
I can't even, I can't even verify Paul has a torso.
I have very short legs.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just offer something for your consideration.
Yeah.
The uh, last Open Public Meetings Act notice that we issued, we were remote, then we went live, then we went remote again. So that last Open Public Meetings Act notice would have encompassed the reorg meeting in January. So that, right now presumably is shown as being remote via Zoom. If you want to go live January, that's fine. We would just have to remember to get an old Public Meetings Act notice out in time. If you decide to remain virtual for January, we're covered by the last notice. And you could set at that virtual meeting where apparently you're only going to do reorg in January anyway. You could then set the meeting dates, the annual meeting dates going forward for the rest of the year and indicate that they're going to be in person. But it's entirely up to you. If you, if you prefer to be live in January, we can do that. Uh, we just have to send in, I have to remember to get an old Public Meetings Act notice now in advance of that meeting, for that meeting. I, I, I had been operating under the assumption that the prior notice had expired and it was time for us to reset. Um, to the extent that that is not true for January, uh, I would actually believe that the better thing to do would be to stay consistent with the old notice, keep it virtual for January. That'll give us a chance to see what happens with this Omnicron variant and then make the call then. My inclination is to go, go live as soon as we can. Um, but I don't like the conflict in the notices. Anyway, that's my thought.
And since we.
It might make sense.
The substantive meetings off until February, that would seem to make sense. Have that be the first one back?
Now, these meetings will still be held at Borough Hall, is that correct?
Yes.
That's awfully tight quarters. And, and tight quarters with a variant that we don't understand. And I know there are many people that won't go to movie theaters. I know there's many people that won't go to eat indoors in restaurants. Uh, I think that New York has reinstated a lockdown or at least a uh, a mask wearing mandate. Uh, I, 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 I think that if we, if we meet virtually in January and see where we stand at that point, to me, that makes a lot of sense, but I wouldn't be so quick to mandate a return in February at this particular point. That's my opinion.
You know, I think that that's really, i- if we, if we can all agree that leaving the notice the way it is and staying virtual for January with no applicants anyway is the easiest course for the next thirty days. We'll add more information on the, on the variant. We can discuss it at that point. You know, Dr. Lauffer, it's, it's difficult because you're only one board, you're only one board member, but you're the only doctor. Um, so your opinion carries a lot of weight and um, I feel like we should, I think we should defer this discussion until January, leaving that virtual.
Yeah. Todd, I realize, I realize I'm the only doctor on the board and I, and I also want to assure everybody that I'm in communication with people that I know down at NIH. Uh, in addition to what I hear in the media, I have some additional background information. Um, I, I have been boosted in addition to receiving my vaccines. Um, I, I have some pretty good inside information and I, I'm not ready to go, you know, to go dancing out in public yet. Uh, I, I think that uh, I think that people are still vulnerable and especially if they're unvaccinated. And I try to get as much information as I possibly can. Not only through the media, but through back channels as well. And I, I'm not, I'm not ready to uh, to just state that this thing is over yet.
Well, for me, there's two factors, right? There's the, there's the ability to hear the applicant live and have their professionals be in a room with us. And there's also the willingness of the public to come and participate. Um, and I feel like the applicant is um, most people that I speak to would prefer to be live, uh, given the work at hand. What I don't know is what amount of the public is comfortable or not comfortable coming to a meeting. Um, I think that it, in my world, my understanding is that people recognize the risk isn't over. But they're attempting to um, draw some lines for themselves as to their own risk tolerance. Um, and, and that changes particularly when we have a variant that comes through. Um, you know, Delta changed, you know, over the two or three months that we saw it all come through, the way people felt about the risk posture change. And so, you know, again, really no reason to decide tonight. Um, I think we just defer this to January.
That makes, that makes the most sense. And I, you know, and, and we will have a lot more information by January. And I think we'll have a pretty good understanding of where we are. I just, just do want to point out though that our particular quarters where we hold the meetings does not leave a lot of room for us to spread out. And that presents a very uh, a very difficult or, or an additional factor in addition to meeting live. We're jammed in there.
And we're there for hours at a time.
Right.
Yeah.
We're lucky.
Mr. Leader, um, I think that we were considering or talking about maybe continuing to post the materials online and sort of developing some sort of like hybrid uh, approach that might make it easier for people to have access if they don't come to the meeting or if they can decide whether or not they want to come.
Yeah, I, I, Pat, I feel I, I feel really strongly that there are some positives that have come out of um, this, this pandemic. And one of them is our ability to communicate uh, with residents via these virtual meetings where the people wouldn't have otherwise come. And also because our materials are all available. I, I believe that we should continue to keep the uh, materials available digitally. And Sandy, I know that council has set up that system uh, for their meetings to be both live and virtual. But that's not in place or it's not working uh, for the planning board meetings. Can you see what you can find out and share with us in January about plans to um, to make that system available to the planning and the zoning boards?
Yep, I will um, talk to Teresa about it. I think that what they're doing now is um, more of a trial type of a thing. And I think they're looking to purchase some additional equipment is what was happening. Was the reason that we weren't able to um, piggyback on what was being done by the council. Because I think it's been pretty effective for them.
The, the scope of that equipment is going to have to be pretty comprehensive because one thing we have to keep in mind. A, a council meeting differs from a board meeting because a board meeting is an adjudicatory hearing. People at council meetings can comment, no one's sworn in, there's no exhibits being marked. And uh, and obviously we can discuss it more. I'll simply tell you, I'm not a fan of what some people have been tossing around as these hybrid meetings, part live, part remote, because it creates problems in terms of managing the meeting, managing the record. People have to be able to see all the exhibits, they have to be able to see all the speakers. And it, it can provide a host of additional problems if someone wants to uh, challenge the board's determination afterward. I'm just, I just offer that for your consideration because the nature of the governing body hearings and the planning board hearings are different because ours are adjudicatory hearings.
I, I think. Have you, have you or have any, has, does anybody else feel that the applicants have been shortchanged in any way by these uh, these Zoom meetings? Uh, I, I, my own personal feeling is that people get a really good fair shake. Uh, the material is evaluated well. We have a very good alternative to in-person meetings and I, I personally don't feel that anyone's been compromised by these Zoom meetings. Do, do any of you feel any differently?
I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say it that way. Um, in my office, uh, as a transactional real estate lawyer, I work with a lot of land use people and we work, we talk about these things. Um, a- and so my impression is that most people like Michael and other land use council would prefer to be in the room because the communication with the boards is different when you're live. I can tell you that I think we've done a great job of making do with what we have. Uh, but I can also tell you that a planning board subdivision that we did earlier this year, a couple of months ago that we did live, I walked out of the room feeling very comfortable that we had a better hearing as a result of all being there together. And I can't put my finger on exactly why that was. Um, but there was a lot of interaction, there were a lot of exhibits, there were a lot of professionals and a lot of discussion. Um, and I know that I felt it. Is it material and could I put, weigh, weigh that against the potential risk of somebody getting sick and becoming seriously injured? Of course not. Um, and that, and that's the rub, right?
Yeah, can I ask how long that meeting, that meeting lasted?
Um, the meeting was probably close to three hours. That portion of it was probably a couple of hours.
Frames, lenses and even contacts, hearing, including hearing aids and glasses.
From, from an applicant, as Dr. Lauffer, as Mr. Leader indicated, from an applicant's attorney's perspective.
Zero, both a call and a consultation are one hundred percent free.
I got a TV that just turned itself on here and I don't know.
Well, you can just mute yourself for a moment. You can just mute yourself until it turns itself off. And that frankly, is the thing that, that's what concerns applicants, attorneys and board attorneys. We don't always have control over the technology during the procedure.
I, I understand that. I'm going to kill this thing in just a minute. And, and I'll, I'll go on mute to do that. But I just want to remind everybody that, that contagion, contagion is exposure over time. And, and especially in a confined space. So uh, I'll mute myself while I deal with this other issue, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
For example, we have.
Hey, Mike, can I ask a question? Can I ask a question? How many, how many boards or councils or groups that you're involved with are still going remote? Is it more?
I, I have five, five boards. Set, well, I have four plus Fairhaven, total of five. Of the four, three are live, one is remote. The one that's remote is still remote because the governing body hasn't gone remote yet. All the others, as soon as the governing body opened up and came back, they felt an incumbent upon themselves to do the same.
Okay, and you know, my, my other question then is uh, is there a better location for us to go to? Because you know, I understand the concerns of the, the council or the room that we meet in. I mean, it is very tight. It's in a basement. It's not very well ventilated. Um, are there other options out there?
Well, one, one problem, one of the problems you have is, as we had with regard to other matters such as the Dunkin' Donuts matter. When we went to the school to accommodate more people, now you have to work it out with the host if they want all these folks coming to their facility, who otherwise wouldn't be there.
So nothing's easy.
No, nothing's easy. I, I will tell you that the, the land use committee's been meeting at Bicentennial Hall. And uh, I'll tell you that I like that facility. Uh, it's a nice space. It's, it's open. Um, the only problem with it is the lack of parking. Um, and I know.
Acoustics are awful.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that's true to an extent. Um, but anyway, there, there's some discussion about, about utilizing that, that facility to a greater extent and um, but I don't think, I don't think that we do that now under these circumstances. The planning board and the council are meeting live in council chambers right now. I, I don't know the zoning board's gonna given all the things going on in town, I'm not sure they're going to get a lot of people paying attention to us if we ask for a better place to meet. So the decision has been deferred until January and will continue remotely in accordance with the existing Open Public Meetings Act notice remotely in January and then the board will decide from there. That's my understanding. Thank you.
So we don't have to do anything then?
Good. Right.
Do we need to make a motion of that effect or just leave it?
No, just leave it.
Nothing's being changed as I understand it.
Correct.
So the next thing on the agenda is selection of professionals for two thousand twenty-two. Um, and Michael, you know, my, my thinking is that to the extent that we can have uh, that discussion in closed session, that that would be my preference to do so. So again, just when we talk about professionals, that'll be the, any ultimate determinations will be made by the board at the time it reorg, reorganizes in January. That'll be the purview of the board as reorganized. But to the extent that the board wishes to go into closed session, it can do so to discuss personnel matters, which includes appointments. Uh, understanding once again though, for the coming year, it'll be up to the board as it reorganizes in January. Now, I, I saw this on the agenda, so I had circulated a, a generic Open Public Meetings Act resolution to the board earlier today. So if someone does want to make the motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel matters, including the board professionals, Sandy has that resolution. And what we'll do is I would suggest that the board members, if you, if you make that motion and it carries, that you log out of the Zoom hearing. And uh, you have a telephone number to call in for the conference call. You can have the conference call. When that is concluded, uh, Mr. Leader, if you or someone else would call me so I can terminate that conference call and I won't participate. I'll just initiate the call, then I'm going to come back here to the Zoom meeting. I'll initiate the call from my conference room, put down the phone and come back here. Once you conclude that, uh, we terminate the call, then come back to the regular meeting so you can address any further items and then close the regular meeting. Uh, so I'm going to make that motion, but before I do, Sandy, do you have the call in information?
You're muted.
I do.
All right, I, I would like you to call in and take minutes if you would. Uh, I'll make a motion to go into closed session. And this is to discuss personnel matters, including board professionals.
Second, just.
I'm sorry, I missed the second.
Eric.
Thanks.
Sandy, would, Sandy, would you give us that number again, please, just to make sure?
Hold on, hold on, we can't.
We can't.
By email. Broadcast.
I'm sorry, yes, you're right.
If you have your email, fine, otherwise I'll forward it to you right now.
Um, okay. Yeah, can you send it to me because I'm on my work computer?
Sure, I'll, I'll forward it, I'll forward it to everybody. Uh, but do you want to, do you want to continue the roll call on that motion first?
Okay, Mr. Nick Chesney.
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Ledman.
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kinsella.
Yes.
And Mr. Leader.
Yes. Okay, logging out.
Okay, logging out.
Mike.
I'll be right back.
Sandy, I can't see all the windows, so as soon as you see everybody, you can go ahead and do roll call.
We all here?
Yeah, waiting on anybody?
You ready for a roll call?
Think so?
Please. What do your facial expressions mean, Sandy?
Oh, the wrong headset in, sorry. Why aren't they talking to me? Sorry.
Oh, that's great.
All right then. Are we ready?
We are, thank you.
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes, here.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yeah.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Ludman?
Here.
Dr. Lauffer?
Here.
Mr. Consella?
Here.
Mr. Shia Vetti?
Here.
And Mr. Leader, sorry about that.
I'm here. Okay, Michael, do we need anything to confirm that we're out of closed session?
Well, I assume when you were in closed session, you made your motion to come out of closed session. You've now come back into the regular meeting. You've done your roll call, so we're back in the regular meeting. So the question is if there's anything further that the board wants to attend to this evening before you take a motion to adjourn.
So I'd like to make a motion to solicit RFPs for the Board Professionals in 2022.
Under the fair, under the fair and open process.
Correct.
Second.
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mrs. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ludman?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Consella?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
Yes. So I did just want to briefly update the board. I want to thank the board for what I thought was a great meeting in October when we hosted the council and a number of members of the public with regard to zoning and consideration for changes and updates to the zoning ordinances. The committee, the smaller component of the committee, namely the mayor, Councilman Neff, Councilman Koch, Councilwoman Neff and Councilwoman Koch, and Mr. Nachesny and I have been meeting regularly and we have been discussing some things that came out of the meeting and that have been on some of our lists for a long time with regard to updating the ordinances. We have sort of incorporated a summary of open issues that the zoning board has had included in its annual reports for many years. I'll thank Mr. Ryan for helping me put that together. Marty, I actually incorporated that into a current memo that the committee is circulating as a list of things that are going to be subject to analysis by the committee and by the public in 2022. What it looks like is that the committee is going to have a shortlist of short-term goals that they expect to advance to the planning board soon. I would say within a month or so. There would then be, as part of the process, a discussion at the planning board level, which I'll alert you all to, and I would encourage everyone to attend and participate in an active discussion about those ideas. Then the planning board would then give recommendations to the council about moving forward with those issues based on kind of how that all plays out. Then the council would draft ordinances presumably, and then that would go back to the planning board for review of the ordinances, then back to the council for adoption. It's, it's some really good stuff, some stuff that I think has been lingering for a long time, and I hope that the residents will be pleased to see a substantial effort by the governing body to go after these things and try and come up with some solutions. And then there's going to be a second list of things, which we've got together, which I think we're going to keep talking about. And so that, that process is in the works, but I'm very hopeful. Any questions about that? Okay, Sandy, I can't see whether or not we have any diehard residents who have hung on this long. Is anybody there?
We have Susan O'Brien.
Okay, so I just open it up to the public generally or Susan directly for any comments before we close.
I'm going to bring in Susan. Yep.
Okay.
Good evening. The only thing I'd like to say is that not all boards and committees are meeting live in person. Shade Tree is still on Zoom. Fairhaven Fields Natural Areas on Zoom. And there's one other. I'm kind of disappointed when I've attended the planning board meetings that nobody masks up. And since I have comorbidities and I like to attend the meetings, I would prefer that when you go back to live meetings, that everybody mask up just to be safe. And especially since, you know, there's always something new and waiting for us out there. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, anybody have anything further? Great. Anybody want to go to the bar?
I'd love to. I'm working though.
I could go. Text me if you want. Text me if you want to go.
Where? Which one?
Navu.
You know what? I might see you there in 10 minutes. I owe you a drink for renominating, Mike. Thank you.
I'd love to join you, but I'm 1,400 miles away.
Ah, dare you. Hope summer warm, I hope.
Seventy-five and sunny.
Actually, it was 63 here today. It was lovely.
Yeah, it was.
Got the lights up.
All right.
It's pretty warm. I would love to go. I'm working tonight, so enjoy, Bush.
All right, yeah, motion to close.
Before you do that, best wishes to everybody for happy.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
Christmas, happy holidays. See you all next year.
Stay safe, everybody.
You too.
Thank you, Sandy. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everybody.
Did we finalize the motion?
Unanimous acclamation.
Right.
Yeah.
I'll see some of you at the bar.